Can I welcome members, officers and members of the public viewing proceedings online to today's meeting? Welcome back to the town hall in Liverpool for our first committee meeting here since the lockdown was announced earlier this year. I will now ask the committee clerk, Jane Warne, to check that members present virtually can see and hear us. Can I also ask Vicky Roberts, who is monitoring the live stream on the councillor website, to confirm that this is operating correctly?
Councillor Bailey, can you see and hear everything okay?
I can see and hear everything okay, thank you.
Okay, councillor Morton, can you see and hear everything?
Yes, I can see and hear everything okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Plendergast?
Yeah, I can hear everything, thank you.
Councillor Cummings?
All right on my end.
Councillor Byrne?
All good, Jane.
Thank you.
Is this all working fine from your perspective? Some housekeeping rules, and please bear in mind that this is the first time we're trying this, so if there are any hiccups, please do bear with us. I'd like to remind members and officers to leave your microphones on mute during the meeting unless you want to comment. In addition, can officers also turn off their webcams unless you are addressing the committee? Once a member has spoken, please ensure to mute your mic again so that the audio remains clear. When anybody does wish to speak, whether that's members or officers, you can either use the hand up feature on some version of Teams, or please try and attract my attention on the screen. If neither of those two options work, give me a call. It's the last option, last thing that I want you to do really, but if neither of those other two things work, give me a call. I'm going to put my phone number in the chat, and you can also make a note of it if you've got a pen. So that's the last option in case none of the other things work. So give me a second while I put that in the chat. There we are. Okay. Last thing I need to say before we crack on with the meeting is when I do bring you in, please unmute your mic and say your name, and then allow a brief pause of just a couple of seconds to make sure that the camera and the visibility on screen follows where they're hearing you from. Once you've spoken, please make sure that you lower the hand on the Teams facility as well. So hopefully that should be crystal clear to everybody. And with that, I'm hoping to move directly through to the agenda. So item number one is our declaration of interests. Do any members have any interest to declare relating to the items of business set out in the agenda? Take that as a no. Item two, can members refer to the minutes of the last meeting and their on pages one to 12 of the agenda? And can I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting for accuracy? Is that agreed? Maria, you've got an issue that you'd like to raise there, so councillor Toulon. You need to unmute yourself there, Maria, if you don't mind.
There we go, can you hear me everyone?
Yeah.
Page three. It was about the ways to work, about the 18 million. I didn't agree it was value for money. I think Barbara, so she wanted it amended, it was value for money. I don't agree with that, so I don't know what the normal kind of protocol is for that, but I actually didn't think it was, so I don't really support that, and I didn't at the meeting.
Okay, so in the minutes on page three on that item, it says that that's the response to the question.
Yeah.
So in your view, was that an accurate response, or is that an accurate assessment of councillor Murray's response?
Yeah, that definitely is, because Barbara did actually speak up and say, I think it is, which is obviously Barbara said, but I'm just saying I didn't agree, so I don't know, did you get the committee to take a vote on that, or is that protocol, I don't know, because I queried it.
So you would like us to take a vote on whether it's good value for money, or on whether Barbara gave that response?
Yeah, I think what might will be easier is just to say, because obviously Barbara's closer to it, Barbara can say, in her opinion, that's value for money. I didn't think it was, because I thought the percentage of, which we had a conversation about, the percentage of people that we've got into work for the investment seemed quite low.
So if we have the minutes amended to say that the response is that councillor Murray has advised that this is good value for money, and it articulates this is the response of the member?
Yeah, that's perfect. Yep.
I didn't actually say it was good value for money. What I said was, it's over a period of years, it includes that number of staff, over five and a half years, and I think when you work it out, it actually, it might not be deemed good value for money, but it is effective value for money.
I think the best way that we can proceed with this is that we look to strike that last sentence from the minutes. So is that the view of the committee? Is that okay? Okay, we can strike that from the sentence. Are any other issues relating to the accuracy of the? Councillor Cummings, do you want to speak?
Thank you, Chair. All I just wanted to add was I distinctly remember councillor Toulon raising this issue, and from what I can remember, she wanted it documented that she raised those concerns. So all I'm saying is I just want to support councillor Toulon on the issues that she's raised.
So with that amendment, are the minutes of the last meeting agreed? Do we have any matters arising from those minutes? Okay, I'll take that as a no. Item three on our agenda is endorsement of revised draft employment and skills select committee terms of reference. Now, just to speak to this agenda item, under normal circumstances, the terms of reference for select committees are ratified by full council, and they would have been done so at the start of the municipal year. That hasn't obviously happened this year, so all I'm looking to do is to say that this committee ratifies, endorses the terms of reference in advance of a proposed ratification at the next meeting of the full council. So do any members have any questions relating to that? Councillor Shortall?
Yeah, I have some questions on the, first of all, the list is bulleted rather than numbered, it would be more useful if it were to be numbered. So item number two on the bullet list, and operation, I think should be outcome and performance, really, because I can't see how we can do, we can review the management and the performance, and it should be outcome and performance, we've had, we really do now. Yeah, outcome and performance, rather than management and operation.
Do any other members have any comments, any questions? Councillor Shortall again.
Another question as well, is that sometimes I've been to other committees and they get a full report of what's coming to this committee, and when we get it, it's actually very diluted, it's more abbreviated, or shortened version of it. So it'd be useful if any reports that say the cap goes to cabinet first, that we actually get some indication of it sent to us, even though I haven't come up before our committee yet, it will do, we'll look at it, so it's useful, just so you've got an idea of it before it comes to the committee. I could send you examples of where the cabinet has actually had a more in-depth, detailed report than we ourselves who've actually scrutinised that report, I just haven't got them with me right now.
Okay, and that's in relation to the terms of reference that we're looking to endorse?
It's good that we get, any reports that go to cabinet should be sent to members of this committee as well before it gets to the cabinet, rather than, because we're not getting the full reports, I'd love to both.
I think it would probably be useful if you gave me some examples of this outside of the context of the committee, so I'm not quite follow exactly what you're referring to there. So I'm quite happy to accept an amendment there on this and replace management and operation with outcome and performance. So Jane, you were trying to attract my attention there, what was that? Councillor Cummings?
Thank you, Chair. In regard to the ratification of this committee, I would like to have it documented that I am not happy with the current circumstances of ratification of this committee or any other committee, and the reasons being that a third of this council was up for election, and those elections have not gone forward. So there is a democratic deficit in a third of the councillors not being re-elected, and in that committee, that is a flaw in democracy. So I'm not happy with any ratification at the moment, because we haven't had those local council elections, and I don't think any person at this moment can justify themselves.
This agenda item is to endorse the revised terms of reference of the committee, rather than the ratification of the democratic mandate of the people who are sitting on the committee. So we'll just pass that one if we can for the moment there, councillor Cummings. In relation to the draft terms of reference, do any other committee members have any comments? Councillor Toulon?
Just the first one, Chair, working with higher education institutions to increase the rates of graduate retention, I think that's quite a general thing and quite hard for us to do. We can look at what they're doing and support them, but I don't think as a committee we can actually do that. I think that's a big ask of a committee. I think that, you know, we can scrutinise policy and we can look at things, but I don't think we can actually get them to increase rates of graduate retention, or maybe someone explained that to me that something we can do, but I wouldn't have thought that we as a committee could achieve that.
I'm quite happy to accept that amendment too, and that deletion, and to take that bullet point out of the draft terms of reference. It would actually be more of an executive function in any case, rather than a committee function.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Morton would like to come in on that.
Thanks, Chair. I would have thought actually, Maria, that's more to do with us having a very healthy job markers from the employment point of view.
Can I answer? Is that all right? Yeah, Dan, but I don't think we as a committee, you know, working with the, I don't think we can have that influence. I think we can support the strategies for graduate retention if we see them, and input on them, and maybe scrutinise them, but I don't think we can increase work with any higher education to help them, that's, I think, just beyond our remit. That's just my opinion, you know, obviously it's up to the other members of the committee to import.
So as the Chair, I'm happy to accept those amendments, both from councillor Toulon and from councillor Shortall, firstly to remove that first bullet point, and secondly on the second bullet point, to replace management on operation with outcome and performance. So with those provisos, can I ask that the proposed terms of reference be agreed for submission to city council? I'll accept that as agreed. Item four is endorsement for protocol for scrutiny during the municipal year. Again, can I refer members to page 29 of your agendas, if you have that there? The point behind this was we're in very strange circumstances this year. Our cycle of meetings are drastically reduced through obviously no fault of our own. However, it's important and imperative that scrutiny continues, and so I've drafted up a temporary protocol where cabinet member and senior officers will look to be scrutinised on a remote basis and to provide written reports in the absence of a full cycle of meetings. So can I ask, do any members have any questions in relation to that? Councillor Shortall firstly.
Yeah, thanks, yeah. Again, if we go down to the bullet point, it's not numbered, it would be really helpful if it was numbered. We go down to where it says these briefing sent on a monthly basis, it would be useful if we could have it as data led. Also, if you go to the following areas, what it says here, it says management, operation. Can we change where it says management, operation for performance and output again, please? That's it.
Councillor Miller would like to come in.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think there's an opportunity in this particular protocol to also hold the Liverpool City/Region Combined Authority to account. It isn't mentioned, it mentions Liverpool and Work, it mentions the Adult Learning Service, but a great many things are happening that we are not directly involved in, but do get to know sometimes.
Chair, can I just make a quick point on this?
Sure.
Thanks. So are we going to the end of the session in 2021 with the hybrid model, or are we?
That's my understanding, yeah. We've got, I think, three meetings booked in now for this municipal year, and they're all sadly going to be done like this, rather than all in person or all via, solely via online means.
Well, I congratulate the council on that, because unfortunately we're trying to force the government to do the same, and it's like pulling seeds, so well done on making sure that everybody's got the ability to attend and participate in democracy, excellent move.
Thank you very much, and short officers will be delighted to get that endorsement there. On the substantive issue, again councillor Shortall, I'm happy to take those amendments, and councillor Miller, I'm happy to put in an extra line in there about scrutiny of the Liverpool City/Region, because I do think that is something that we do also need to do. And councillor Toulon, I think, and then councillor Cummings, you've indicated, councillor Toulon first.
Just want to support Gary's point there on the Liverpool City/Region, I think that's a really good point, because we don't have a control of a lot of those things, so just to support Gary on that, I think that's a really good idea.
Councillor Cummings, you've indicated as well.
Thanks, Chair. Councillor Toulon stole my thunder there, I just wanted to echo what councillor Toulon has said, and with regard to the intervention of councillor Miller as well, was a very good point, I wanted to second that as well.
So with those amendments, can I move that the protocol be agreed? Is that agreed? Fantastic. Item five, again, we've got a number of these, and these are especially because there's a backlog, because we've not had a meeting for a number of months. This is an endorsement of a formal submission to our counterpoint select committee in the House of Commons. They issued a call for submissions on the future of the world of work, and their deadline was 30th of June. So on page 30 of your agenda is the submission that I made, having consulted informally with members via email. I had wanted a meeting of the select committee to take place prior to the submission being made on the 30th of June, however, unfortunately, the systems weren't set up in time for us to be able to do that, so the agreement that I came to with committee services was that I would be making a submission on a personal basis as the Chair of the committee, in line with council policy, and in line with what's previously been discussed and agreed at this committee, and that we would subsequently look to have, hopefully as a formality, the submission that was made back in June endorsed by the committee. So on that basis, do any members have any questions, or can we just move to agree that on a retrospective basis? Okay, I think I'll take that as an endorsement of what we've done, so I'll move that the submission has been agreed. Item six is our annual report, and that's on pages 33 to 34 of your agenda. Now, this was, as you know, a standard submission that gets submitted, gets published in the last meeting of every municipal year. Obviously, this year, we're four months behind the times, but nevertheless, it does need to be formally approved. So can I move that the annual report be approved for some council annual report for 2019-20? Is that agreed? Now, having all of those procedural backlog issues dealt with, I'm delighted to be able to say that we can move on to item number seven, which is an update on employment figures in the city. Now, as I'm sure you know, the forecast for employment across the whole of the UK isn't good, and I wanted to make sure that you're fully appraised of the situation from the city council's perspective, and where we are in relation to that. So can I invite Darren to introduce the report?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I don't intend to go into report in particular much detail, it's mostly information there in front of members. What we know at present is, as you said, that the situation nationally is challenging. We don't have, for the city at this point in time, detailed unemployment data, but what we have is data that's indicating that the number of people who are claiming benefits is rising and rising significantly. But what we also know is that lots of those people are claiming benefits while still in work, and lots of the positions of those people are being protected at present by the government's furlough and self-employment income support schemes, which obviously are due to end in the next few months. We are watching very, very closely the national picture, trying to understand what that might mean, and whether those schemes may be continued. There was some questions raised in Parliament today on precisely that point. If they don't, then obviously there will be impacts on employment at this point in time, it's impossible to say which. Chair, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Darren, for that brief introduction to the report. I'm assuming that members have been able to read and to interrogate the data that's in there, so do any members have any questions on that? Councillor Plendergast?
Yes, Chair.
Yeah, off you go, Frank. Sorry, mate, you're on mute, take yourself off mute, councillor Plendergast.
Can you hear me now? Okay, it's just a question about the figures on the charts. For example, in Everton, it shows the February 20 figures, it's just to satisfy yourself. For example, it shows Everton figures in February 20, 860, June it shows 1,435, and a difference being 71% increase. If we have an area where there's high unemployment to start off with, and then we get an increase, the percentage increase will be lower because there was a high number, is that right, Darren? Whereas if you get an area where there's lower employment, you get a number of people coming off, it will show a higher, it's just the reverse of the figures. Is that the way this shows up in this chart? Do you understand what I mean?
Sorry, I think councillor Plendergast, it's probably slightly more complicated than that as well, because these figures aren't necessarily showing people moving into unemployment, they're showing the number of people who are claiming benefits rising. So it could be that people in award have not become unemployed, but actually begun to claim, for instance, housing benefit, and does that make sense?
You see, it shows Everton, for example, being a 71%, which is a low percentage, whereas there was already a number of people who were claiming benefits. I understand what you're saying, but it is a reversal when you're looking at the figures. I've read your figure, I've read your points, yeah, there are people on furlough who are not included and all the rest of it, so it's frightening when you look at the figures, and when the furloughs come to an end, and on the end of October, these figures are going to be absolutely frightening.
Sorry, councillor Plendergast, I think the point you were making, if I understand it correctly, is that obviously if awards already got a large amount of the population on benefits, then the number of people that are left that could move on to benefits is obviously smaller.
Yeah.
A ward that's got very few people on benefits potentially has a greater degree of swing than it could have.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's that point, that's correct, yes.
Yeah. Okay, it doesn't reflect in the figures as you look at them, but you have to think about it. Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other members for any questions? Councillor Byrne?
Yeah, just to Darren, really, Darren, Frank's just alluded to it now with regards to the end of the furlough, and some of the figures are absolutely terrifying, and also the self-employed, potentially if their jobs aren't retained, what we're going to face within the city. A central government haven't talked about potential impact of the end of the furlough scheme, are they reaching out to the councils and talking about what may happen, as Frank alluded to again about hiring unemployment in Everton, but I think you look right across the city, the figures are terrifying from north to south. So I am just wondering firstly, are the governments actually making any sort of intervention with the city councils, preparing them for the unemployment, because as someone who's now 48, and lived through the 80s and what happened with youth employment, and then we're seeing other social packs of what happened to the lost generation, I lost many friends to head of them, and my great fear is that environment's now getting recreated, and potentially will be recreated, so firstly, are the governments making any sort of intervention with the council and extra help with regards to the end of the furlough scheme? And if not, are the Liverpool City Council preparing themselves? I know there's an item on the agenda later on about unemployment, but I think this will be one of the huge crises that are going to face the city, and what are we doing as a city council to prepare ourselves to ensure that there's not another lost generation? And what are we doing as a city council to prepare ourselves to ensure that there's not another lost generation?
Chair, I think the first thing to say is that before government had responded, we'd already given our economic growth plan to government and said, this is what we intend to do. And I think that there's an item in detail later on the agenda on precisely that point. We were there first as a city council, saying, here's the steps that we feel we need to take. In terms of government's response, there's obviously the kickstart scheme, which has been announced today. The detail on that, we're still waiting for. Looking at Elaine to make sure of the case. But that will target 16 to 24-year-olds. So, and that will provide some temporary employment. But I think the big thing we're waiting for are government's big announcements around what might the stimulus packages look like. At this point in time, we think that won't happen until later on this year. Members will be aware there's a comprehensive spending review taking place at present. And that's where we think maybe the new packages for investment and growth may come from.
Any other questions? Councillor Tool, I'll take your intervention.
Just a brief question for Darren actually. Darren, looking at those numbers that you've shown for all the wards, what I'm surprised that, obviously I'm concerned for my ward because it's almost doubled. But also, I'm just, and that's why I'd like your opinion, on wards like Walton, it seems to be quite a high, and areas that I wouldn't have expected to have increased that quickly or with such a high percentage. What would that be down to, do you think, Darren? Is that just people having to be, that they're not furloughed, that they've lost their jobs? Because they, the huge percentage increases, central wards, Mossley Hill and and which our perspective is, and I just wondered what your opinion on that was?
Chair, those figures aren't unemployment figures. They are people who are starting benefits. And there's a large number of people in the city and nationally who have been furloughed and are probably only receiving 80% of their normal salaries. In which case, they will then go and attempt to fill that gap by claiming, it may only be that they're claiming a small degree of housing benefit or something similar. But then they will appear in these figures. So what this isn't showing you is suddenly large numbers of people who've been made unemployed or large numbers of people who are suddenly very, very dependent on benefits. But what it's showing you is large numbers of people becoming slightly dependent on benefits in some cases. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, that's, thank you.
Councillor Prendergast, I'll bring you in now.
Yeah, just a quick point. I was only using Everton as an example to clarify the point. I know it's the same right across the city. But there's also an awful lot of people who haven't received anything, and gally knows this, businesses and entertainment and everything right across who aren't receiving anything. You know, there's an awful lot of people who've gone months without money because they signed into self-employment too late to receive anything, any payments from the government. And some of them have not been entitled to universal credit. So there's a bigger problem hiding behind all of this as well. If not to expand the argument, it is right across the city and the consequences for some of them people are absolutely terrible. Thank you.
Then we'll note your comments there, councillor. Is there anything, anybody else? I believe councillor Barry, I can't see you on screen, but I'm reliably informed that you want to speak.
Hi, I'm here. And it's just about the increase in claimant count by age. I was just wondering, is that fairly similar across all areas of the city? Or is there any variance, for example, when you have a ward that might have a very high demographic of older people? Does that show any kind of like significant uptake in the increase of payments that are over 50?
Chair, I don't think we have the data down to that kind of granular level at this stage. Some of that more detailed data comes out slightly later. But there is a national picture that younger people are being particularly affected by the job losses and by the loss of hours. And some of that might reflect the numbers of young people, which depends on the gig economy, not just in the city, but nationally.
And councillor Short.
Yeah, thanks for the report, Darren. It's really great for, on the very end part there says, therefore, circa 75,000 people, residents will be currently employed. So it will end in October 2020. What extra resources have we give the council when all these things end in October? What extra things have we got here? Because it sounds like there's going to be a tsunami of people here.
Chair, I don't think we can say for certain yet what might happen once both states and furlough scheme ends. But obviously, I can take my earlier answer, Chair. We've made our ask to government very, very clear. We did that, I think, before anybody else nationally. And that was a strong and robust request to government to help us grow the new jobs that we're going to need, but also to put in initiatives that we believe will help support people who find themselves in unemployment. Right now, we are still largely waiting for government's response to that, both locally and nationally. Kickstart scheme has been announced today, which will provide some support for some people, but not for everybody. And I think it is us continuing to lobby, continuing to put pressure on government where we can, but where we think there are actual needs, and continuing to work with civil services and ministers at every opportunity.
Can I ask, Darren, you've placed a value on of the self-employment income support claims. This is the second or last one. So this is a value of £35.2 million. Do you have a similar value for what the 60,100 furlough claims might be?
No, we don't, Chair. Again, the data is released slightly piecemeal. And some of this data is new to us. So we may be able to find that out later during the year.
Can I ask when you get that data, if you can bring that to the committee? I think it would be useful for us to have monetary values on this so that we know it's, whether it's people who are working part-time or gig economy work, or whether it's more secure, higher-paid jobs that are being lost, how we can articulate that out to you to see where we know. Councillor Morton, want to come in?
Oh, just really brief, Patrick. In terms of what Darren just said, but we're not really sure what's going to happen after the end of furlough. As somebody who is repping DWP, DWP are doubling the number of work coaches. And they've made the commitment to go from 27 to over 50,000 work coaches. And they're also mass recruiting in universal credit service centres and looking to extend the hours that job centres are open until eight o'clock and extend the number of job centres that are available. So governments are pretty much preparing for a very deep and biting recession. And so I think that obviously that's something we should be preparing for too. Thank you.
Thanks for that, councillor Law. That's, that's good to know and interesting to see. And do we have any more questions or comments on this agenda item? In that case, can I thank Darren for the update? Dave, do you want to come in? Councillor Cummins?
Yes, thanks, Chair. And I just want to add to what councillor Morton has said. We do, and it's, you know, it seems that she works in that sector, that's great for that information. We do have links with the Department of Work and Pensions as a city council. And those links should be strengthened all the more in this coming two army. That's all I wanted to say.
I'll make sure that that gets noted, that we can look to see what can be done about strengthening those links. So on that note, can I move that that report and the information is noted? Is that agreed? And item eight is on pages 44 to 48 of your agenda. I can ask you to refer to those pages. And we have our officer Elaine McCausland to introduce the report and to speak to it. And as well as that, if you can, just give us some indication about this kickstart scheme that's been announced today. I have no details to patchy, but can just speak to that as well.
Thank you, Chair. The councillor Haley had asked me to produce just a brief information report to highlight the changes in terms of service delivery for the adult learning service, particularly given the issues around the pandemic and the virus. I do need to say that over the past few months, there has been some significant changes to the way the service will be delivered. And the officers in the teams have been working really hard to ensure that we're ready and equipped to bring our learners back over the coming weeks. But just focusing on the report, what I've tried to do is provide you with some basic background, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with in terms of how we currently or previously have delivered services. We have normally around about 7,000 learners that access courses. And we deliver and we subcontract some of that provision as well to a number of community organisations. But going forwards and highlighted in the report, what I've tried to cover there is some of the things that as officers, we've had to change going forwards for good quality delivery and to prepare us for, as I say, learners coming in. We've had to completely shift our delivery across to online and remote learning. We've, under normal circumstances, we've got spaces for about 500 learners across the four centres. And that's dropped down to about 135 places face-to-face with social services in those. So we've had fantastic support from our corporate ICT teams to help us to move across to Microsoft Teams, just as we're using now. And we've put a lot of support in. We've got our learning and development workforce teams that are going to work with our teaching staff. So for most of the delivery going forwards from this point onwards, we'll have some face-to-face delivery, probably for our more vulnerable learners or lower resell provision, for example. But we'll have a blended offer and we will, obviously, we will offer some Microsoft Teams and short courses in that way as well. So the tutors are having to get used to that. And our digital services and our IT teams have been fantastic. We've also had support from school improvements because, again, the schools are going through the similar, similar changes. And we've taken guidance from some of the schools' protocols that are going, that are being put into place. Our trade unions have been fantastic because, again, we've had to make adaptations to services, service delivery and physical space. So our trade unions have been very helpful. The other things I've put into the report are how we've, I guess, tried to understand the learner market going forwards and the impact on the type of curriculum that we'll be, we'll need to deliver going forwards. We've just heard some of the discussions about the changes to people's job roles, furlough, people, you know, working different hours, hours dropping. And we do expect more learners to come through the doors in September, you know, whether that be face-to-face or online learning. So we have asked our learners about how they feel about learning online, what types of things would they like to do? And how, and what kind of kit they've got as well. You know, we do worry that a lot of our learners might not have access to laptops and equipment. And some learners might be working off mobile phones. So what I've tried to put into the report, there is some basic initial responses that learners have given us so that we can prepare to respond to that from a service delivery perspective. We do intend to continue with consulting with learners about how they want to learn with us and get their feedback so that we can adapt the service delivery. But we do increase in learners as unemployment rises and the labour market tightens. And increasing adults who need different types of training, as well as basic skills that are good at delivering all the, all the types of training to help them with maybe a job change. Potentially more support for parents and carers who are trying to support their own children who are learning online themselves. So we think we might need to deliver some more of that, have an issue in schools. So lots of community there. I think we had a presentation at the last committee about some of the developments, the regen developments physically that are going on in County Road, for example. What we want to try and do is work in those spaces where there's physical redevelopment going on, to work with people and bring, you know, some of that, some learning communities together in those geographical areas in the wards. So, well, out there are some of the financial implications as well. Some of this does cover a cost. We have had to purchase more kits, laptops, headphones for staff. We do anticipate we'll need to buy some kit for our learners and we're looking at different ways of doing that at the moment. Maybe through sharing and loan schemes, accessing and tapping into other devices and and resources that are available within the communities. But there has been a physical price to pay for some of that. Our contract managers within the city region, we fed that back to them. And, you know, we're waiting for information and support from them in terms of maybe some additional allocations within our budgets. But they do control the budgets and they allocate the budget. So, you know, it really is over to them. So really, that's it in a nutshell, I guess, in terms of the adult learning service changes. Big, big changes to delivery going forwards. And I'd be happy to take questions and maybe cover kickstart after questions, Chair, if that's okay.
Do we have any comments or questions for Elaine? Okay, so Fraser, councillor Lake, I'll bring you in first.
And thank you, Elaine, for that, for that report. And I'd like to thank you first of all for everything that you and your team are doing, especially in regards to the the figures that we have seen in terms of over 90% of respondents have accessed learning online at least once a week. Just to talk around the fact that, I know that 50% of the respondents said that they found it easy or very easy. And the 22% who said that they didn't find it easy or not at all easy. I just wanted to say, have we seen any impact in terms of, you touched on it a little bit there, about people, for example, who don't have access to either technology or to the internet? And have we seen that impact anyone? Or have we actually seen those figures, those cases raised directly with us? And so that we can see how much of an impact that's had. And also just as a two-part question in regards to the kits that you mentioned as well. And we'll be looking at options, for example, for schools and the local authority maintained schools to maybe utilise some of the technology labs that they've got and like actor hours, for example, to be able to allow our adult learners to utilise them options as well. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thanks for that. I think what we need to do in terms of the feedback from our learners, the first part of your question, is to have more focus groups, socially distanced focus groups with the learners to get underneath some of those concerns. It was a small survey. So I think some of the things that you're raising there, we will take those forwards and do some further research with our learners. And then, yes, we definitely would want to work with schools or any community organisations where we could share some of the kit, definitely. We are wasting, we do rely on a lot of outreach venues and we are a little bit worried that because of social distancing, we might not be able to get access to some of those venues. But, you know, it's work in progress with us at the moment with the team.
If I bring in councillor Lavelle, who's been not so patiently waiting there.
Thank you, Chair. I was also going to, thanks Elaine, I was also going to bring your attention to the, to the figures following the survey, but councillor Lake somehow beat me to it because the chair called him first. So, but there you go. So showing up in the chamber doesn't, doesn't give you priority if anyone's thinking at home that it does. It certainly doesn't. But I did have another question around the finances, wondering what the cost implications actually have been. But also, you know, given the previous report, the indication that potentially is 75,000 people in the city who won't be in receipt of government support. who won't be in receipt of government support post October. What we might be doing to try and manage demand, the rise in demand later on in the year? Thanks.
Yeah, and in terms of the financial implications, we're currently, you know, working through that at the moment with the team and with our finance managers. And, you know, I can certainly feed that back to you at some point. But, you know, we don't get allocation within the adult education budget for this kind of thing. What we can do is we can access things like our learner support funds, which is an additional support strand of funding that we can draw down to buy kit for learners. And we fed that back to the combined authority to say that our drawdown on that strand of the budget will be higher this year because we will need to buy more kit. And they've been very positive around that. So again, all of this is work in progress. And when we speak to the learners who are coming back now into the centres, we will be doing a lot of that work to find out what kit they've got. And again, those figures could change and go up. So, yeah. And in terms of the, I suppose, the resource that's needed going forwards to meet demand, what we always try and do is mix and maximise the budgets and the resources that we've got across the employment team. So we've got an adult education budget, we've got our euro funds as much as possible. We try and open up that resource so that all of our learners can access, you know, as much support as possible. And, you know, they're the things that we have to do. It's all externally funded, you know, service delivery. So going forwards, I think we need to keep a very close eye on the euro funds. And we know a lot of that is only funded till June 2021. But also continually feed back to our combined authority. They only need the resource. And there's large support there from the combined authority.
Councillor Cummings, you've indicated that you'd like to comment.
How do you, Chair? Welcome to Fraser Lake, he's here to spot what I want to ask. The second point is Elaine, and furthermore Elaine, thanks for this report. I don't have it in the paper for me front to me. When we go to my communication with you two weeks ago, I always forget the name of that scheme that I mentioned. It's the Support for Employment Scheme. What's the name of it again?
Yeah, it's the ILM, it's the Intermediate Labour Market.
Yeah, ILM.
Kickstart.
Yeah. You said you were trying to access funding for that. Were you successful? Were you not successful? Are you still waiting?
Yeah, I can give you an update on that. We were waiting for a proposal that we put in to be approved. That is going through the approval processes at the moment. It's not formally approved yet. But what that will do is it'll extend our ability to offer that strand of the employment service until December of this year. But after that, it, you know, it's, we haven't got access to that resource after that. And what we're waiting for is a proposal to go forwards for access to the National Reserve Fund. There is some underspend nationally in the euro pot. So we're hoping to try and draw some of that funds down to continue that service.
Right, thank you for that.
Councillor Trenzagast next.
Yes, Chair, just a quick one for clarification. The bullet point below the 50% of the correspondence. 29% use the laptop, 17% tablet or iPad, and 78% use the mobile phone. Someone just explained to someone who's not very good at maths how we get a 130 odd per cent. It is a combination, Elaine, or?
It's a combination, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just a weird trip mount. Just a bit confusing for someone who's very old and very tired.
Councillor Shortall, you've indicated, I'll bring you in then.
Thanks for the report, yeah. On that same point, what Frank's brought up, I'll bring that up. But also the important part of that point is, is that you want to make sure all the software and web based stuff is mobile phone enabled. It's really, really important that because you go on sometimes on and it is web enabled for mobile phone. Getting that start was the important, you know, 75% of all are using. Address it. So it's got to be make sure. Sometimes I'll be on the council website, it's not even updated something. The things about the web could be able to keep up to date all the time. So we can have it, that a priority goes to making sure it's mobile phone enabled. Software, you know, or internet web based stuff, make sure it's mobile phone.
Thank you, councillor Shortall, that's noted. And I will feed that back to our IT teams and the support services internally. Have talked to our corporate team and I've explained to them that we get a lot of scrutiny around service delivery and that they'll, you know, counsel, I see the kind of support that we're getting. So, yeah, I'll feed that back.
Councillor Lake, you want to come back in?
I'm sorry, and yeah, sorry, I was meant to ask this before, but I couldn't actually read my own handwriting. I'd like just scrolled it down on the pad and went a bit doctor's handwriting. So, sorry, I'll ask that now. In regards to the report, it states on the equality implications. There's no mention of any sort of, it says that it's obviously gathered learning services to actually support social mobility and the reduction of health inequalities and social value. I'm just wanting to pick up around the fact of equality in terms of those with either disabilities or anything there about how accessible the learning is in that regard. To make sure that obviously nobody, I know it's a little bit more difficult to demonstrate since we're mostly drawn upon that. But I just wanted to ask what's being done to sort of make sure that or who are disabled or who have disabled and classes, how we're sort of removing those barriers there for them so that they're not prevented from learning.
Yeah, what we'll do is we will prioritise face to face delivery within the classrooms for those learners who we feel will benefit more from that and who need that. But in addition to that, in the body of the report, if you get some time, there's a clip that I've put in, which is a list link from a college in Westminster. And they show you how Microsoft Teams can be used, you know, to support accessibility for a whole range of learners. And I would urge members and councillors to watch the clips. They are absolutely fantastic. We've shared them with the teaching staff. And there are some really good examples of how teams can really support learners with, you know, a range of impairments and disabilities. So, you know, the training and support that we give our teaching staff around that will be ongoing. But we will make sure that, and also that we'll consult with our learners and get feedback as well. So, you know, we'll do everything we can.
Do we have anybody else with any other comments or questions?
Pater, can I just, real quick one?
Yeah, sure.
Thanks, Chair. Elaine, thanks for the report. It was, it's excellent. Just a real quick one with regards, I think some of the colleagues have touched on it. You know, and they touched on it earlier, if we do face what we're going to face with regards to unemployment, is it better preparing now, or best case scenario where we could actually know what we've got?
Well, while he seems to have dropped out, we'll take councillor Shortall's question and then hopefully councillor Bear.
I'd just like to record the sentiment and, you know, for people with disabilities, especially if you were deaf. You couldn't be watching this here now because you would have subtitles. Will it be subtitled at the meeting as it's recorded? And will the council in the future, we're going to do Zooms, have a label? So people who are deaf can actually hear what's going, can read what's going on by the interpreter. How does that work? A sign, in other words, you know.
Take that away and look into it and. Councillor Byrne, we lost you halfway through.
Yes, yeah, the internet in London is not as good as Liverpool, unfortunately. Just a quick one, it's with regards, as I said, Elaine, preparing what we'd actually need to ensure that everyone coming out of, coming into unemployment would have the ability to get trained through the adult learning services if they wish. So instead of doing like a piecemeal, a piecemeal approach and sort of like picking around the scraps. The best case scenario for this city, what would we need, you know, monthly buys, more tutors, make sure that we had the facilities, you know, it should be a ask that we're making in the government now. After 10 years of austerity, we should be using this to push back, I feel. And trying to upscale our city and the people within our city and trying to reopen some of the facilities that have been closed due to austerity. So I would urge adult learning services to plan so we've actually got something which we can take to Parliament. And I'm sure Steve Rodham to the city region could actually push forward as well because the retraining and the people coming in, coming into that market is absolutely key to avoid, as I said earlier, an 80s style disaster for our class and our city. So if you could do something, I don't want to put work on to you, but if we could actually envisage what that is, what is required, that would be really, really good from my perspective and fellow MPs in the city as well to take to London. Thanks, Elaine.
Thanks, Ian. I'll take that up, yeah.
We'll make sure that that gets done, Ian. I've got a question for you, Elaine, if that's all right. So finish off there and then hopefully you can address the kickstart scheme as well. Can you talk us through what your assessments of some of the trends, changes are to the demands for courses since lockdown? Because anecdotally, I'm hearing that there's less demand for certain things than you would have expected. So certain maybe level one English and there's more demand for other types of courses. How are you coping with those changes and what do you expect them to change into as 2020?
I think if I'm honest with you, we're really still finding our feet from our residents, really, about, you know, what types of things that, where their interests are and volume and footfall as well. We definitely know that over the past few weeks, we have had a very large expression of interest in, you know, our maths and English courses. And we've got lots of people signed up for those, for those courses. But I suppose things like sector based skills academy type training is definitely another area where we're getting lots of people who want to retrain. They want to do something short and quick so that they can move. And I suppose that's in response to people who are, the job changes, I guess. They're moving from one job to another, you know, people who maybe were in a trade, but they're now, you know, courier, van driving, deliveries, logistics. We've got lots of job changes. So things like route ways, we call them route ways or pathways and they're short, sharp, but very effective sector skills type training. We definitely envisage that that will be, you know, in demand and we've had a lot of interest in that as well. So it's a mixed picture. And I think that really we need, we do expect more volume, definitely. We do expect more people to come through the doors and that's brilliant and we welcome that. As do our colleges, you know, we work very closely with our FE college and they feel the same as well. So it's just trying to be as responsive as we can and as flexible as we can. And, you know, try and beat that demand. Yeah, so kickstart, so kickstart is very similar to an ILM, an intermediate labour market scheme. What we know from the government scheme is that, as Darren said before, it is aimed at 16 to 24 year olds to really target that, the youth potential, youth unemployment issue. It is available for people who are claiming UC, Universal Credit. We know that it is a scheme that will last up to 26 weeks. And that participants in the scheme will get the national minimum wage for around 25 hours a week. We do understand there's potential for, depending on who the employer is, for them to top that up. Depending on, you know, their own circumstances. What we've done is through the LGA, we have supported some quality standards around the kickstart scheme that have been fed back nationally to DWP. What we don't want is for that to be, you know, a basic job matching scheme, which, you know, young people don't have an option or a choice in terms of the types of jobs that they're offered and are moved into. So we would, we would want to see, you know, a good five staged approach where there's good wraparound support. There's good discussion with the individuals, there's advice and guidance, there's aftercare support, there's training on the job. So they're the quality standards that as local authorities and through the LGA, they're the things that we want to see. And we hope that, I'm sure that our DWP colleagues have looked at that. We also know that the individual employers can apply it into the scheme themselves. However, if there is a group of employers or there are more than 30 jobs available, then DWP are looking for intermediaries. What those intermediaries will do, we're not quite sure yet. But it will be in some way to administer the job matching function of some description. We also know that individuals will get £1,500 towards training and support. And if it gets to an intermediary level where we have either a local authority or a prime contractor or another organisation or a cluster of employers, for example, that are managing the job matching and the scheme, that there's a £300 a head administration cost as well. So there are some management costs in there. And as I say, the referrals will come through a very, very close relationship with Job Centre Plus, where coaches. And we do know that youth hubs, in one of my previous reports, there's a lot of work going on at the moment to set up youth hubs for young people where they can get advice and guidance and support. So wherever there are youth hubs, there will be co-located advisors to offer that support and advice. And that is a way of referral for young people into the scheme. But what we'd be looking to do is encourage as many employers to create jobs. We know it's open to the council. We watch this space for more information. We've got a meeting with our combined authority colleagues tomorrow. And there's a DWP workshop online on Friday. So it's still, you know, we're still finding our feet with it.
I think your update has been very comprehensive and thorough. So I'd like to thank you on behalf of the whole committee for that. Can I move that Elaine is formally thanked for the update and that the information is noted, if that agrees? Move on to item number nine. Now, if I can refer members in the first instance to the supplementary agenda that's been published separately. I had asked the University of Liverpool for a short briefing paper just to outline the challenges that they're facing in relation to the COVID pandemic and the possible impact on higher education and student numbers and impact financially for the city. James Cow from University of Liverpool has kindly produced this briefing for us. And he's provided his contact details at the end of the report, at the end of the briefing and said, by all means, if any members of anybody would like further information, please do raise those questions with him directly. And what I would just like to draw your attention to in that briefing is two sentences. Firstly, on financial impact. James says that current indications suggest a shortfall in income of between £58 million and £100 million in the next financial year. Now that dwarfs some of the other losses that we've seen from the furlough scheme or from the self employment scheme. We are likely to see not just a tsunami of job losses, but a tsunami of disinvestment into the city if this continues. And I've spoken to the MPs office locally, to the MP for the to the MP for Liverpool Riverside and asked that she makes recommendations and interventions on a national level. And I wanted to make sure that these figures are minuted, are in our agenda and are published on the city council website so that people can look at that and see for themselves. The other thing I want to just bring your attention to is still on financial impact, it says the full impact is unlikely to be clear until several months from now. But this is a national crisis through which government has already sought to intervene. Now, far be it for me to cast aspersions on government intervention right now, but it hasn't been all that these last few months, has it? So I wouldn't be surprised if the full impact is even more in excess of the £100 million that they've already talked about there. If you do have any questions on that, James Cowell at the university has provided his contact information at the end of that briefing and I'd urge you to get in touch with him. So on that note, can I move that the report and that the update is noted, is that agreed? Frank, I believe you'd like to make an intervention there, is that right? Come off mute. You're still muted Frank, can you come off mute for us? Okay, is that, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
In the, in the report, you talked about students getting... And it's within the agenda of your pack that you should have there. So do any members have any questions? Fraser Lake, councillor Lake, I'll bring you in.
Thanks Chair. I just wanted to completely support the motion by councillor Levell. I think not as only at this moment in time, given as the motion states, on the pandemic. I think it's absolutely something we already know that we're concentrating on, given previous agenda ratings in this meeting today. However, I do think it's in moving the right direction and I'm fully supportive of that motion there. I think that position would just echo really the effort that's being made across the city council and show that what we're actually doing and we are taking it seriously. But it does, it does show that by the creation of a post and I'm doing that to right, I'm fully supportive of that motion. And thank you for councillor Levell for creating it.
Councillor Cummins, you've indicated to speak.
Thanks Chair. As mentioned before, I don't have the agenda in front of me. So I'm just asking councillor Levell just to give a brief overview of his motion.
Okay, off you go.
Do you want to? Okay. For the, thanks Dave. So you fully understand what the motion says. I'll read it out because it's only quite brief. So it says, "To consider the following motion submitted by me, the committee notes with a sincere regret that the country's economy is in the most severe recession since reports began and that job losses are up to 50,000 forecast for Liverpool. The committee believes that only a strong state led response, especially at the local government level, to stagnation on this scale can deliver sufficiently and to effectively combat the human cost of unemployment and wasted potential. The committee therefore resolves to request the chief executive of Liverpool City Council to consider creating a director of employment post with a remit to implement a strategically interventionist approach to job creation and retention in the city."
Did you get that councillor Cummins, did you hear all that okay? And councillor Toulon, you...
Thanks Chair, I will fully support the motion.
Thank you councillor Cummins. Councillor Toulon, I'd like to bring you in now.
Yeah, I think we're all very worried about the impending impact of the pandemic. But I believe the mayor has put together a recovery plan. I'm not convinced that one individual would have that pressure put upon them to be able to bring or increase employment in the city. And what, you know, if you were to create such a role, it would be very performance led because how else could you measure the success? So although I support the idea, I just don't think it's practical. And I think we're just creating another layer within the council. And I think we've got Darren, we've got all of his team. I've gone and read the major recovery plan. I think we've got all the teams that we need within the council. I think it's just more about how we now measure performance and accountability. So on principle, it wouldn't be something I'd be supporting.
Councillor Prendergast, I believe you'd like to speak as well. Can't quite see you, but if you'd like to speak.
Yes Chair, I agree with councillor Toulon. I support the sentiment of the resolution. But the report that the mayor put forward in line with employers, the universities and the trade unions as the way forward for the city, I think that that would have more impact than trying to employ one person to try and achieve the same effort. It would put too much, I actually don't think one person could achieve it. It's something that's going to need the cohesion right across the city region to improve the city region rather than just Liverpool city council area. And I think that the chief executive, the mayor and all the other interested parties across should be working together to achieve this, rather than just putting it on one person and saying, go and get on with it. I don't think one person could achieve it. And I agree with the sentiment behind it, but I do think that the mayor, the chief executive, the employers, the trade unions and everybody, the universities, they're the people who should be pushing and trying to bring this about.
Councillor Cummins, would you like to come back in?
Thank you Chair. Just a slight amendment. We don't need to employ somebody. I'm of the opinion that we need a coordinator. And that can be somebody that has a position within the council now to coordinate this intervention. Let's drop the employment. We don't just have somebody already in the council now that can coordinate this. If councillor Levell is happy to amend that, I'm very happy to support that.
Thanks Dave, I think it's constructive input. I think it sort of defeats the objective of my motion if we, if we put added pressure on officers. And I think, you know, I think we've got highly capable officers in the council, capable of doing the job. But, you know, we've got an impending crisis, we've just aired an item seven, that potentially 75,000 job losses in the city. So I think it is crucial to have somebody that's leading it. And we can call them whatever we like, as long as I think it's important we've got somebody that's actually driving it forwards, that's a specific project.
I'd like to just say that I think the broad thrust of this, of this motion is something that should be, should be supported and should be welcomed. We're a socialist council and I think a strong state led response to the impending worst financial and economic recession in living memory is precisely the sort of thing that we should be doing here. So I would urge you to support the motion. Can I bring in councillor Shawstall please?
Yeah, thanks. I think the motion's well meaning, but again, I've got my own reservations here. I think we've got Tony Reeves, the chief executive here. I think that's his position to do that. I don't think, you know, add another layer of management on top of what we've already got is helpful because, you know, how are we going to fund this in terms of it's another funding stream we've got to find. And I think we've already did quite a lot and we've got a lot of plans. There's Team Liverpool, there's plans all over the place here. There's a lot of coordination going on. I think coordination's a great thing, but I think it's a well meaning motion and Anthony's a great councillor, he does a lot for his own ward. But I feel, you know, well intended, but I don't feel it's all there.
So we have all the comments from committee members. So councillor Lake, I'll bring you in.
Thank you Chair. Just on this point, I just wanted to, obviously for the benefit especially for councillor Cummins, as well, we can't see the agenda directly in front of them, and for the benefit of the rest of the committee. The motion itself states that we request the chief executive to consider creating this post. It doesn't enforce anything upon the chief executive to create this post. It's to look at the ideas, I think the comments really, and I think obviously having the chief executive hearing this discussion as well as useful. But I think the fact that the comments that people have fed into that can form part of that discussion. And at the end of the day, it doesn't place a direct onus upon the chief exec to create this role. It's to look at the possibility and actually, there would be, and as with any, as with any employment decision within the council, there would be an analysis of the financial impact versus the benefits of that. And I think that would automatically be taken into consideration, especially if it was to be an employment post at a director level. That's not something that would, A, happen on its own and it would also be subject to the appointments, appointments panel as well, and it would go through those extra checks there. So I do feel like, I understand the concerns that fellow members have raised, but that doesn't necessarily guarantee that a job would be created. And there are additional safeguards in place. I understand the concerns that councillor Toulon and Shawstall and Cummins have raised. However, this is something that could be addressed whilst the chief executive weighed up the position, looked at it and actually decided whether it was and then fed back into the, into the committee with the response, as well as the appointments panel as well when they reviewed this, to make sure that it was the right thing to do for the city. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor. Can I ask, are there any formal objections to the motion as it's been presented to the, to the committee? Okay. On that, on that basis then, the motion is carried. And if I can ask the committee clerk Jane to make a note of that on that basis. And councillor Cummins, you've got your hand waving at me in front of your screen there. So would you like to make a comment then?
Thanks Chair. I did have my formal hand up on the thing there. Right, so I would like to make, to propose an amendment to this proposal, to seek a coordinator within the council.
So councillor Levell has indicated that he's not accepting that amendment. So do you have a second for an amendment along those lines? Okay. Then the amendment would fall. That is agreed then, and we can move on then to item number 11, which is our regular updates from the cabinet member. If I can refer you to pages 49 to 53 of the agenda. If I can hand over to councillor Moore, if you'll be able to speak to that in person.
I'm not going to say too much about the report. It's quite long because we haven't met since February. And I think with very unusual circumstances. One of the first things I do want to say though is a big thank you to all the officers and staff. They've sort of been doing their day job and additional things. And even here in the town hall tonight, as I came in, it was lovely to see staff again. But they were telling me about the very many different things they've been doing, helping with food banks, helping across Heath Hall, helping in Coonaw. So no one has not transferred their skills during the lockdown and the pandemic basically. Generally, coming back to my report, I would say there's been a great opportunity for us all to reflect on what we want to do. And I think very early on, officers were talking about using this to hit the ground running when we come out of the lockdown. And I think we, as a city, did that when we presented the economic recovery plan to government, the city plan, and talking with the combined authority about the kinds of money they're looking to draw down to help us cope with this emergency. So much work has been done and so much work is in place to help us react quickly and try and get the kind of support we will need. With respect to apprenticeships and jobs, I think the Chancellor has made some big statements, to say the least, about what he intends to put on the table. And huge amounts of money, the likes of which I don't think we've ever heard before. What we need to do as a city is make sure that we get a very good portion of that for ourselves. I think we've talked enough about what we want to do. I think we've got plenty of shovel ready projects and ideas that we can push forward on if we get the kind of support only government can give. I personally was really pleased to see that Liverpool College, as I have referred to T levels several times to this committee, and I was a bit disappointed. We weren't in the first tranche of colleges to offer T levels in the city, but we are offering at Liverpool City College next year. Other things that I draw your attention to is the neat round table. We only had one meeting in February, but it's a move in the right direction. It's us focused down on what is a difficulty in the city and monitoring it very closely to make sure that we actually improve what's happening. Other things I would draw your attention to, I think here we've got very good information, very clear information. With respect to the needs, our numbers haven't gone up as badly as elsewhere. And maybe that's because we are so focused on it. But I think we have to think very carefully about what's happening in parallels. We can measure what's happened over the last three, six months, but what we cannot be sure of yet is where we will be in 12 months' time. So we have to be dealing with what we were already doing, if you like, whilst we're also preparing to do other pieces of work. Now with respect to the job market, I think that looks like we, we have to keep the effort up for the long term unemployed. And that's why Maria, to go back to your point earlier about the minutes, it does look like a lot of money to remove barriers to employment. But if it breaks the cycle within a family, I think it's a good spend because there are many families in this city who haven't worked for some time. So we have to keep that pressure up to help them. We also have to try and find the quick wins, people who are skilled who may lose their jobs because of the pandemic, who we need to get back into work quickly. And then there's the other people who might have to retrain to then get back into work. And alongside all of this, we're looking for quality apprenticeships for young people and because of what the Chancellor said, people over 25 now. So in parallel, we've got all these different ducks, if you like, that we've got a line up and we've got to be doing a good job for each of those cohorts. To come back here, I draw attention to a meeting we literally had yesterday, thinking about, or something that was mentioned in a meeting we had yesterday with Darren and Elaine, about young people and the potential for maybe more work between businesses and schools. We have actually got a job or a role out for us currently at the minute, for somebody who will work specifically coordinating, to use your word Dave. The relationship, if you like, between schools and businesses because over the years, businesses really do want to work with schools and schools want to work with businesses. Neither of them have got the capacity to do that. Somebody needs to bridge that and align them. But we've discussed things like youth enterprise hubs. There's a lot of innovation, but we're not to lose sight of what we've already started. So we've done... So we've done some good work around the talent pipeline and changing horizons, as I've updated there. I've also been meeting with Jill Roberts, who's the, she works for Morgan Sindal, but she actually is the Chair of Liverpool Regional Contractors Group, and they're really, really keen to work with us and our schools, our young people, to explain, for example, just in construction, how many different types of jobs there are. And the importance is not to in 15 and 16. We need to be telling them from a very early age, so they're making the right choices when they choose subjects, so they understand the types of qualifications they need to get into these jobs. And the fact, I think it's really important with construction, that they know that's got nothing to do with gender, doesn't matter if you're female, male, there are jobs there for everybody. Just to highlight, Good Business Festival has gone online, from what I can make out, so it hasn't been cancelled, and we need to really be engaging and, I don't know, getting a buzz around the city again, which we would normally do, you know, down at the Albert Dock and the rest, but we've got to do it in other ways now. I was really lucky during the lockdown to virtually meet with the new head of the maths school, and I introduced him to Bill Fowler, who I met with Gary originally earlier on in the year, and I think that's a really good example of how two different people can help each other, how we can get the best careers advice to the best mathematician, if you like, and how they can best get good jobs in the city. Volunteering, and this is something I think we really all need to keep our eyes on. We had that phone line for volunteering, which was closed down when we got to 3,000 volunteers, and I keep asking, and where do they go now? Because when I'm out in the community, the community keeps saying to me, we need more volunteers, and it's for a range of different things. It could be debt advice, it could be for helping to manage a food bank. The point for us now, given the potential for this increase in unemployment, is to remember volunteering is actually often a very good route into employment. So we need to look at those volunteers to see where they can help our community groups going forward, but where they can also help themselves. If they're available to volunteer, they might not be in work, and it could be that during that volunteering is that step towards getting a job. For us as a city, and I know you've all heard me say this before, the importance of being in work and in good quality work is we get good quality pay, and ultimately, that's what we need for our city. We need well-paid, high-achieving citizens, because that then breaks all the other cycles, and it helps towards, and this is the point about education, this is where education sits with employment and skills, get good qualifications, good work, and this is our economic regeneration model. I haven't anything really else to say, except I did go out to Newsham Park Adult Learning Centre, I think it was last week, or maybe the week before, the days are all the same, aren't they, when you don't go out? And I have to say, they had personally done a fantastic job, very much like in the town hall here tonight, a one-way system for learners. This is to cope with, because it is a different world. Apart from actually doing everything we do, we're now having to do things in this very prescribed way to ensure safety and reduce risk. And, you know, I would just like to say to them, thank you for making me so welcome, but please can we all talk up what they're doing? They are open for business, and, you know, retweet when they put out their courses and things, help them to promote what they're doing, so that they do get the kind of, I don't know, if people are going to be out of work, that should really be your first port of call. It doesn't just help you get more qualifications, it's also a route in to knowing other people, isn't it? And I think that for me is the final thing, but I just, at the end, I've put up here an item to Cabinet, and I'll come back to something William said earlier, Chair. I think what he was asking was if these reports that are going to Cabinet could be highlighted before they go to Cabinet to the members of this group, and I'm quite happy to do that. When I see something coming up, I could let you know and you could let members know. Does that make sense? I'm happy to take questions.
So on questions, firstly, I'll bring in councillor Barry and then councillor Shaw. So councillor Barry first, please.
Hi there. You have touched on this previously, but when you spoke about volunteering and the help line of 3,000 volunteers, I was just wondering if there had been any surveying or if there will be any surveying of the status of those volunteers now and while they were doing the volunteering. So for example, were they majorly working full-time, part-time, retired, seeking work, et cetera?
Thanks, Kimberly. That's a really good question. I've been talking to some of the officers who sort of were managing, if you like, or looking at the details of this, and one of the things I think we do need to invest in is a kind of coordination, really. What's needed is a programme whereby the ask is on one side, if you like, and the skill is on the other, and we
Are we going to get the data for June and July also? Because it gives a bit more of an idea of what's going on, a trend, because I get the point that Covid is a game changer here, and that's something, I've never lived through a pandemic before, and so nor has anyone else here, I would like to think. And, you know, there's a lot there to consider, but I just think that we have a little bit more data in terms of, on the needs, that's what I'm concerned about, because we're trying to do as much as we can in terms of apprenticeships, and we don't want to be giving any more levy money back than we have to be. So if we can turn those needs into apprentices, that would be absolutely fantastic. Thanks.
Yeah. What I'd say about that, William, is there are several big reports, but, and that's why, you know, I think you're best reading them yourself, but I think the important thing to state is how well they fit together. And one thing comes out to another, the one that's not mentioned here is the Mayoral Inclusive Growth Plan. But everything actually here, all of these plans are basically elements of that, they are the roots, if you like, or the plans to help us achieve what was set out in that original document. I take your point about wanting the information for June, July, and that will come. What I would ask, Chair, is would you like us to feed that stuff in on a monthly basis? Because I've been reading elsewhere that there might be a request on cabinet members to start actually giving monthly reports rather than this big six-month document, which, you know, it could have been that we needed scrutiny in March on something, and it didn't happen. So I just think, I'll throw that one out there.
Yeah, and I think monthly reports are definitely the way to go, especially in the current circumstances, and hope for the rest of this municipal year, so I agree with that. William, are you okay with that response? Councillor Toulon, you then indicated that you'd like to comment, I'll bring you in now.
Thanks for the report, Barbara. It's really useful. I've just got a couple of things. Morgan Sindal, they're on the Contractors Group, did you say? I couldn't quite remember the name of the group that you mentioned, and I just wanted to know what they will be doing with regards to obviously promoting what they do, and will there be other service industries based on professional services? Because although I support obviously Morgan Sindal doing that, we really need to raise expectations in our schools of apprenticeships, because there are lots of different apprenticeships. There are apprenticeships to be a solicitor now, for example, so I'm just hoping one of the groups that you're inviting to go to the schools.
Thanks, Maria. I just gave Morgan Sindal really as an example, and the Contractors Group, Liverpool Regeneration Contractors Group, as an example. If you look more towards the talent pipeline and the changing horizons, these are opportunities for businesses to meet with young people. I mean, the changing horizons, unfortunately, this summer secondary day had to be cancelled because of Covid, but the idea with them is we work very closely with the DWP. We ask all the business who attend, and there's such a wide spectrum of business, very many different types, to set purposeful, skills-based activities. And we can actually hone that in even more, we were talking about this yesterday, it could literally be, you know, we're stating these skills are to do these types of jobs. There's a lot more to be done, but I just feel we're getting on the right track. I think we're focusing in on the right places. The other thing, we were talking about yesterday as well, is, I mean, there's another opportunity for us in that the post of the person who looks after the youth parliament, he's about to retire, and we're looking at that as a new possibility as well, how well that fits in with, I don't know, forums for young people, for them to talk, for them to have opportunities to come in here. But we could literally have situations where young people meet more regularly with businesses in forum, in the town hall, for example. So it's not just about the construction industry, to answer your question, they were just an example. We are just keen to get business and schools working together. I would say off the back of the Morgan Sindal conversation we had, they've been really up front supporting the year of reading, and they literally pulled out all the stops to support our Liverpool bear hunt throughout August. If you kept your eyes open, they had bears hanging out of buildings, climbing up walls, wearing their construction caps and hivers jackets, and they had people reading on-site and everywhere they were promoting reading. And I think, you know, if we can get all businesses working with us like that, promoting what we want to promote for education, as well as them getting into schools to say, here's opportunities for our young people.
Can I just respond to that very quickly? Thanks, Barbara. It's known that the construction industry, though, Barbara, is still an industry where there are a lot of fatalities, and people can only work up to maybe their 30s if they're doing manual work. And I just would like to, obviously, you said, and I'm pleased that we're getting other services and other careers into the schools as well as the construction industry. But I do have a question, actually, and I don't know if you can answer, and I might need to take it offline. I believe there's an NVQ now in skills heritage training, and as we've got all these buildings across Liverpool that are falling apart, is there any chance that we could find an NVQ provider for a skills apprenticeship provider within the city? Because we could use that as a training academy, and we could have young people, if they're going to do construction, then maybe we could have them doing something that involves more craft as well. I'm not sure if you can help me with that, Barbara, but maybe if you could put me in the right direction?
Yeah. Can I just say, Maria, I can't hear very well on this, it echoes in the town hall. So if you put that in an email, don't miss any of it, but I liked what you were saying. I think you were talking about opportunities for practical and vocational skills, and I've just mentioned in passing that we've already started something similar in Parklands. We've got a small unit in Parklands of what you might call an alternative curriculum, which is far more vocational, and I might personally, I would love, because A, we need to be using Parklands more fully, and B, I think we have quite a large number of young people in what we call alternative provision, which is very patchy across the city, alternative provision in terms of education. And I think there is a strong argument for giving many of those young people opportunity of a vocational type, and it could well be, there could be almost here, a link in with T-levels and what's coming on stream. So if you could put something, an email to me, so I don't lose that thought. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
I'd like to reiterate that comment of councillor Toulon's as well. I think the ability to mix and match with the heritage and the built environment of the city, as well as skills and training, it's a good opportunity, so I'd like to reiterate that. Does anybody else have any comments or questions for councillor Murray? Sorry, Jane.
I'm behind there for a while, Chair.
On councillor Cummins, I'll bring you in.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks for the report, Barbara. There was two points that you raised, which I thought was really good. First and foremost, with regard to your report, it would be great if you gave us one every month, because that, there's more focus on it then, with a monthly report rather than a long report, which must be a lot more work for you. If you could just focus it down every month, that would be brilliant. Second point which you raised, which I thought was very good, with regard to young people's forums and having an open dialogue with potential businesses about how they're going to provide services for young people, I thought that was brilliant, so I just wanted to raise those two issues.
Thanks for that, Dave.
Anybody for any more? Okay, on that basis then, I'd like to thank Barbara for the update. So on behalf of the committee, formally move that councillor Murray has thanked and that the information be noted. Is that agreed? Fantastic. So question time, item 12. No questions have been received, so we'll move straight on to item 13, which is the called-in item on the Liverpool Economic Recovery Plan. Well, I'm going to take some advice on this, because I believe that we're going to be looking to exclude members of the public. As members will recall, an opportunity was provided for all members of the committee, and those members who had called the item in to review the exempt commercially sensitive information since the 14th of August, a number of members, including myself as the Chair, took up that opportunity and have had their questions responded to. Therefore, only the public elements of the report will be discussed at this virtual live-streamed meeting. So we are happy to welcome the Chief Executive, Tony Reeves, who's joined us in the room this evening, and if I can ask Tony to speak to the report, to you, Tony.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks for the opportunity for coming to speak to you about this. I think it's really important to set the context of this, it's been referred to already tonight by a number of speakers, but right at the start of lockdown, myself and the mayor had a conversation, and the mayor was clear that we needed to get moving in terms of preparing for economic recovery for the city. Going into the crisis, Liverpool was really starting to motor, particularly in knowledge-intensive jobs, in the knowledge quarter itself, through the work with Liverpool Science Parks, and a whole range of other partners working there, and we were getting a lot of investment interest in the city and building what we thought was real momentum, which was great. Obviously, the crisis came at a very, very difficult time in that respect, but we were all so clear, and I think it's been referred to by councillor Byrne earlier on, that the consequences of the pandemic may well be a crisis akin to what we saw in the 1980s, and it was really important that we put bold and ambitious plans together. And it was really important that we put bold and ambitious plans together, practical plans, that were capable of moving the city at pace out of crisis into, into recovery, notwithstanding the fact that this, you know, the hit is, we can't isolate ourselves entirely from the, the economic hit that we're seeing, and let's not pretend that we can do. Because when the country shut down for several months, the economic and employment consequences of that are inevitably devastating. And some parts of our economy here are very reliant on the visitor economy, on hospitality, et cetera, and so are particularly vulnerable to the, the sort of things that we've faced. So, so that was a driving reason why we needed to get going really, really quickly. But secondly, we absolutely believed there was an opportunity here, as there is in every recession. If we're prepared to work with all of our partners and be really bold, that we can reposition our city relative to other places, even though it's a really difficult period for us, and attract more investment more quickly over the longer term, and generate more jobs and better quality jobs, as councillor Murray's just been referring to and other contributors, like councillor Toole, and have already touched on this evening. So that was the, the driving force behind this, and we started work immediately on that. We were also determined to be one of the first places to put our proposals in front of government. And as we were developing the proposals, we had extensive engagement with senior civil servants in a range of different government departments, and we talked to them about our thinking and got them to challenge our thinking, but also participate in discussion. And we've continued those discussions with them post the submission of the plan now a couple of months ago. And we, you know, for example, next Wednesday, we have a roundtable session with Treasury, Bayes, M H C L G, and the Cities and Local Growth Unit, prepared together with our city region partners, preparing a submission on the basis of the growth plan into the Comprehensive Spending Review, which will take place, we believe, in the, in the autumn, where government will obviously announce packages of support for things. So we've been really proactive in that regard. I think it's also really important to set in the context of the wider recovery work that we've been doing, and right at the start of the crisis as well, the mayor, myself, Darren, and a number of other colleagues, weekly Zoom calls with, I think it was Zoom, there's so many different platforms, Zoom calls with business leaders, and a whole range of other interactions with business. And I think we're in a position where we understand the needs of our local businesses probably better than we ever had done before, because the level of that engagement. And just to, and I absolutely accept the point that's been made about, you know, plans, plans and plans, but these are action-based plans. Put that into context, the business grant system that the government came up with, the first week was pretty difficult because the guidance changed every day. The end of that week was the Easter weekend, and because we'd been told by our businesses that the April payroll was critical because they'd had no income, and they were really worried about being able to keep employees on it at the time, furlough hadn't properly started. We tripled the resource that we were putting into processing the grants. Our staff, who have just been absolutely amazing, worked all the way over the Easter weekend, and they processed 35 million pounds worth of grant claims for several thousand businesses over that period. And we got a huge amount of money out to local businesses during the course of the, of April, ahead of April payroll run, the end of the month. And I believe, as a result of that, thousands of jobs were protected in the, in the city. On top of that, we were really clear from talking to those businesses, that there were lots of businesses in Liverpool that were falling just outside the parameters of government debt, the reasonable value of 52,000, for example, when the, the cutoff point was 51,000, or businesses that, because of the, the accommodation they occupied, didn't pay business grants themselves. So we put together a dossier of evidence. Because of a regional lead role I have, we've got other authorities in the North West to chip in as well, we made a submission to government arguing for a relaxation of those parameters. And I'm not claiming absolute credit for this for the council, but there is notice as well, that what we put in there as a council was material in the government coming up with the discretionary business grant system that Darren's team administered really successfully, and again, saved hundreds more jobs and many, many businesses that really relied on that grant to get them through a difficult period. So all the way through this, we've been really proactive, and this is a whole partnership, and it's lots of people in the council and our partners and business working together. I'm not saying this is Tony Reeves, because it absolutely isn't. And I think the spirit in which we've done that meant that we've had great, great business engagement in the preparation of our recovery plan. And because we've had, you know, local businesses, but we've also had the chief executives of Local Legal and General and Bruntwood and others putting their weight behind this and advocating our plan to government themselves, I think we have, we have really stood up and been noticed in Westminster about this. And that is really, really important to achieve the objectives that I set out at the beginning, that the mayor and I discussed at the beginning. I think it's also really important to set this in the context of the wider city-region recovery plan, which was submitted several weeks after ours, but we contributed to that plan. And our city-region partners, particularly on employment and skills, as Elaine has said earlier on, contributed to our plan. And in fact, the submission was by both mayors on behalf of the, the city as part of the city-region element. And why it was really important from a city-region point of view, for the city focus to be there, is because experience from previous recessions tells us, it's the knowledge-intensive core of cities that are the most agile and able to respond quickly, and where the economic recovery is kick-started from. And what I can say to you categorically is that we were the first place in the country to get a recovery plan into government. In fact, it was on the desks of ministers before government had started developing their real economic recovery response at a, at a national level. Councillor Kemp has engaged me in dialogue throughout the process and shared his thoughts on things. And I think councillor Kemp will agree that some of his, you know, the challenge has been really, really good and welcome, as it has been from lots of other members as well. I think councillor Kemp will agree that had we waited to see how everything sort of shook down from the crisis before we really got going with this, we might have had a clearer picture of the impact of the crisis, but we'd have been behind lots of other people in putting our case to government. And so things like the cruise industry is a, it's a very dynamic situation, and those sorts of projects are continuing to be reviewed to make sure we make the best use of public money as we, as we go forwards. But, and of course, there was a question, I think stimulated this call-in, around the future of the office market in the city, and we've responded in detail to, to those questions. And we're really positive that there is a strong office market potential for and demand for Liverpool in the future, and I'm very happy to answer questions on that. So the plan was, was put together, the business cases behind every proposal that we put into government is properly costed. In full, if it's funded by government and supported, it will generate about 25,000 jobs, permanent jobs, 12,000 construction places, and from memory, about 10,000 training places. And obviously, we're in dialogue with government, we've already had some success, I've touched on some of those things earlier on, but with also the Kickstart Programme, I believe we were one of the places that was influential in convincing D W P ministers that they needed to do something at scale. And, you know, job intervention programmes, like the Future Jobs Fund, which is very successful in the last recession, are very costly. But every analysis done for H M T, for the Treasury, suggests that they are fiscally positive for the UK. And even though the numbers are quite eye-watering, it is, it is absolutely worth that investment. And I think the point that, very graphically, about the impact on people of long-term unemployment in the 1980s, et cetera, was brought home to me when we were doing this work, where one of the advisers we were working with was really clear that there is absolutely unarguable evidence that if people are out of work for more than two years, they are statistically more likely to die than they are to work again, which really brought home to me how important this is, that we are quick. Councillor Murray's just talked about the need to get people back into work quickly. And we don't have magic dust to sprinkle on every problem here, but by this bold approach, by the partnership approach that is backed by the big employers in the, in the city, private, the private sector, et cetera, we can make sure that Liverpool is hitting its straps and doing everything we can do to, to get the city out of this crisis as quickly as possible, and build on the inherent strengths in our economy, and continue to build the progress that we were making in generating high-quality jobs in the city, but do it in a way that, and this is backed up by things like all the effort that's going into education, et cetera, that it is inclusive and is creating opportunities for young people in our poor communities to access jobs and get themselves out of poverty, which is absolutely the spirit in the Maryland Inclusive Growth Plan, which is now obviously updated in the city plan that has been through the process, the approval process, very recently. So, look, we could go into loads of detail here, I'm sure there are questions, I'm very happy to take them and pick up some of the detail. I'm sure for the detail I don't have, my colleagues here will help me out as well, Chair.
Thank you, Tony, for that. Firstly, I'd like to, on a personal level, thank the councillors that have called this item in, given us the opportunity to scrutinise in a way that we wouldn't have done otherwise. I think that's particularly important for such a, such a seminal piece of work and such an important piece of work. Can I remind members that if you do have any questions in relation to this item, that they should relate only to the public elements of the document rather than to the exempt part of them? And I'm told councillor Kemp would like to come in. So, Richard, over to you.
Thank you very much, Chair. And I first of all like to respond to what you just said. We did ask for it to be called in because we believe it is an important document, and it's one that we ought to think about more, talk about more, and indeed endorse those elements which we do believe in. Before this was produced, I had already discussed with the chief executive and supported the concept of a rapid response to the conditions that were clearly coming forward in a way that none of us had foreseen at the beginning of February. So let me make it clear, I'm not opposed to most of the stuff in this, and I'm not opposed to the idea of a recovery plan. But I would pick up two things that were said in a previous debate by members of the council. Councillor Toole was saying in an earlier item that we need performance targets that are measurable, and there needs to be accountability. And councillor Shortall said we have plans all over the place, which the chief executive has acknowledged. But at the moment, we've got a bid in for about 1.4 billion. If I remember rightly, the city region has a bid in for 2.2 billion, and according to this plan itself, all that's dependent on another funding bid for 264 million. So that's by any stretch of the imagination, three and a half billion pounds. And I'm not entirely clear, in fact, I'm not clear at all, what the prioritisation is for projects within that. The chief executive has already given you two of my concerns, and my concerns, because I don't think the council is at this point adequately recognising that the new normal that we're going to isn't the same as the old normal that we've left. Let me take the two things that he has raised, and I could raise other concerns. The cruise liner terminal, the last in the executive's office to me was that they were anticipating having more cruise liners in Liverpool next year than they were originally anticipating this year. Of course, this was before the biggest cruise liner in the world deferred all, until the beginning of March next year at the earliest, and that's the Carnival Line, which includes Cunard. And there is strong evidence that that cruise liner market won't pick up again in the foreseeable future. If we take offices, you can see the impassioned plea at the moment for the, from the government to say, go back to work. Now, I think that's an insult to all the other people on this broadcast tonight who are working from home. I think a hell of a lot of work is being done. But I can tell you about company after company in Liverpool and nationally, who are just saying, we won't be going back to work in the old ways. We will be downsizing our offices. We don't need this thing. We do want people be working from home. So what I was hoping would have come today is not just seeing the commercial aspects of this, and you might have been invited to see the redacted version of this, but I haven't. What I wanted to see was the emerging information to support the business cases, which this 21-page document has spent 1.4 billion has signally failed to do. That hasn't happened. So my request is not to try and block this tonight, because I don't think we should. My request is that there is a process which rapidly brings not just the cabinet, but all relevant select committees, and I think it applies to most of the select committees, the context of this, verifiable information which takes Liverpool into a new normal, which is more environmentally focused, which recognises different working mechanisms, which recognises we need to attract newer industries and commerce than we would otherwise have done, and which recognises we're going to have major problems with our city centre, because that footfall is not going to return if we see what's happening with Amazon and the other things, which I don't use, I can't talk much about. So what is the process, which is going to bring the information that I keep asking for back to me, back to you, and back to everyone else that we do have, as councillor Toole and asked for, things that are measurable so we can check what we're doing? So that's the spirit in which I brought it, not to condemn the chief executive or the mayor, I think they've done some really good work, but to say it needs much more solid and public foundations than we've had so far. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Kemp. I would like to address one of the things that you've raised in your comment there, and then I will hand over to Tony to give a response. You did say that you haven't been given the opportunity to see the full report. Now, I appreciate that members have a very heavy workload, and that sometimes some of these things go amiss, and sometimes we don't precisely see all of the emails that get sent to us. But I would just like to say that on the 14th of August at 8:46 in the morning, you were sent an email that says, if members of the committee or those members who have called the item in wish to review the exempt element of the report, this will be available to read from Monday, the 17th of August onwards. I'm sure that that offer for you to read the exempt report still stands, if you'd like to take up that opportunity. Tony, if you would like to address some of the comments that councillor Kemp has made.
And just to confirm, we're very happy that councillor Kemp can come and review the exempt elements of the report, all, I think, just under 200 pages of it, as you know, Chair, because I'm very well aware that you've done, done so, and there is a lot of detail in that. Let's just be clear, I was responding to councillor Shortall and saying, yes, there are lots of plans. I wasn't saying there are plans all over the place, because it's a structured approach to what we're doing. And actually, it's the Inclusive Growth Plan, updated by the city plan now, that is the, the overarching plan for the work that we're doing. And the, the Economic Recovery Plan was in that context, moving quickly again, and back on track in pursuit of the inclusive growth, and the inclusive element of that is really important, as I said. and back on track in pursuit of the inclusive growth and the inclusive element of that is really important, as I said before, as part of that. In terms of funding asks, we're not asking the government for 1.4 billion. We were saying that with an input of about 200 million from government, we can deliver 1.4 billion of gross value added economic benefit in the city quickly. In terms of prioritisation, the full report goes into detail about how we prioritise the shovel ready projects that we are capable of delivering quickly. And put that into context, there are four or five shovel ready projects that we are capable of getting on site in the next 12 months. In the course of the last there was one mixed use commercial scheme of scale built in a city centre in the north of England during the whole of the recession. And we are capable of getting four similar sized significant projects on the commercial projects on site, delivering thousands of jobs, not just construction jobs, but full time jobs in this city. That's the sort of game changing ambition that is in here. And we have really, really brutally prioritised the focus on that and projects that are really good projects that will come later were not prioritised because they weren't shovel ready and they wouldn't have that that impact. In terms of the analysis of the cruise industry, I said in the introduction, it's a dynamic market and things are changing. And because of that, we have that situation under review. And I won't go into detail about that here today, but there will be an opportunity to do so in future. And because of the interest councillor Kemp has shown in that, at the appropriate time, I'm very happy to have a more detailed conversation with him. We're not quite at that stage yet, but we are reviewing those things and we need to do that. And if we'd waited, as I said, for all of the analysis to land to see how the impact of the crisis was was occurring, we'd have been too late in terms of submitting the plan and really getting the government to stand up and sit up and take notice. Projects like the Littlewoods Film Studio project that we're working incredibly hard on and making real progress on in terms of getting it ready to go on site and get the whole scheme commercially viable has already, as a result of this plan, attracted 15 million pounds of government funding through the combined authority to make that project much more deliverable, and we're really confident about that. So and that's as a result of the prioritisation and the detailed work that we put in, the compelling case that we put into to government. So things like the cruising, we'll keep under review. On the question of offices, I just, you know, without being in any way impolite, I just have to wholeheartedly disagree with councillor Kemp's analysis. Yes, working from home, flexible working and agile working, as it was before the crisis, will continue after the crisis. What this crisis has done, and it has absolutely done the same for this organisation as well, has accelerated that shift towards agile and homeworking. But increasing analysis is clear that homeworking alone is not going to be the preferred model for many, many businesses. Yes, businesses in time will require smaller footprints in the city and every other city. But higher quality to be able to enable flexible working, agile working, touchdown points, et cetera, which will create new demand, in our view and market analysts' view, for new grade A office space. I'll come on to the downside of that. During the new normal, until we get a solution to the pandemic and touch wood, we do with a with a vaccine or series of vaccines and antiviral treatments that mean that we can get this problem down to manageable levels and get back to normal arrangements or more normal arrangements going forwards. Because of social distancing, there's potential for more demand for the office demand in context. In the five years pre crisis, there was more than half a million square feet of new office accommodation taken up or empty office accommodation taken up in Liverpool in each of those years. And the supply of good quality office accommodation had almost run out by the time we went into the crisis. And what I can say to you without breaching any commercial, commercially confidential information, there are very active, not just discussions, but negotiations going on for commercial space at scale in the city now. And that absolutely supports my view that the demand hasn't gone away and that Liverpool is still a very, very attractive proposition with one of the deepest graduate talent pools in the country, which is really, really important in terms of big employers accessing skilled labour. And we have hammered that point home in all the discussions we've been having with people as well. So yes, it is going to be different. I absolutely accept the view that we need to take this pause in economic activity to really zero in on the opportunities to improve the green economy part of the agenda and do things differently. I think the Liverpool Without Walls initiative demonstrates our ability to think creatively with our partners and do things that has got national plaudits. And dare I say it, Manchester phoning up and asking if they can replicate what we've done. And London, yesterday, I had the advisor to the minister for London on a conference call, myself and Claire McCorgan, asking us to talk through our whole approach because they are really struggling in London with how to open up the hospitality sector in a way that's financially viable for the businesses. So I think we are absolutely reimagining how the city centre is going to work as part of that. And it's really important that we build those things in. So I don't agree with councillor Kemp's analysis on the future of the office market. And I absolutely don't think that we should write off the city centre or other city centres as major hubs of employment. And what I'd also say is, and people have probably heard me say this before, in economic terms, the world is not flat, it's spiky. And those spikes are the cities because they're the conge and people that generate ideas and creativity and innovation. And it's incredibly important for the future of our country and every other country that cities function properly. And now I do support the call for businesses to bring their staff safely back into work. We're doing just that as a council and in the next couple of weeks, we'll be back at 50% of our office accommodation capacity in terms of occupation. And that is really important as a big employer in the city and as a credible leader of the city that we do that. And we've worked very closely with the trade unions to do that. And I am aware of other employers now starting to do that as well.
Thank you. I sincerely hope you're not giving Manchester any advice about what the secrets of our success are. What I would like to do now is bring councillor Kemp back in briefly, if you would like to make another comment. And then I'm going to go on a roundup of all the people who've expressed an interest. And then finally, I'll bring you back in, Tony. So councillor Kemp, would you like to come back in at this point?
He told me to say that the biggest question I asked at the end of this to the chief executive or the officers is what will be the process for continuing to refine the plan? For example, he particularly mentioned the continued review of the cruise liner terminals. It's really to say, how will this continued scrutiny of a 3.4 billion programme in total? I know that's not what we're asking the government for, but that's the extent of the city region. And city recovery plans will be brought back to us to continually look at measures in that will enable us to judge whether it's working or not.
Councillor Shortall, would you like to come in?
Yeah, thanks, Tony. I've read the 178 page report and I've signed a confidentiality agreement. So I won't be saying anything about the 11 questions I asked. But I would like to thank Chris Walsh for the two cups of coffee. It's a great plan. When I was listening to councillor Kemp, I was almost on the phone to the Samaritans because it was so depressing what he's saying. I've read through the plan. One of the we're out the traps, the Great Operation Ground, this was called first, because we're making the move on what we're doing. We're not getting left behind and wondering what we're doing. What I am concerned a little bit about is that we do tend to mix in these plans and the local city, the Liverpool City Region and Liverpool City itself. So if you go to page 79, you'll see that we ask for the government for 267 million, 150,000. Basically, it was 264 million for the Liverpool City Region, but only 3.1 million for ourselves. So, you know, that's the metro mayor standing on the mayor's shoulders there for that. So what I would say there, there's lots of scope there for employment. We are reliant on the tourist economy though, that's what I've got to say. And you fight like, I don't know why councillor Kemp has got it in for the liners and so forth. These things will smooth out over a period of time. So I don't think it's all doom and gloom just immediately. I think over a period of time, the cruise liners will come back. So we've got to give it the 30 year outlook here. We can't just have this panic stations over six months. Give it quite a few years and things might tailor off there. There might be, you know, virus protection, all sorts could happen in that meantime. So I think as a tourist industry, the cruise liner is really important to Liverpool. And there are other parts of the country where it's important to them too. I think we are reliant a lot on construction industry and the construction industry does itself go through phases. And I welcome the fact that we're improving the heating, we're improving green issues in terms of building. So that's a great thing in itself because, in the word I represent, Old Swan, we've got fuel poverty there. So it's good to bring out the fact that we're trying to improve the heating and we're trying to improve the quality of the housing as it is. And I think there's lots of scope for those for the report to be put through. So I welcome the report and thanks.
I'm going to bring councillor Toulon in and then if there's no other interventions, I think we'll ask Tony to respond and then move to a vote. So councillor Toulon, please.
I did read the whole report, Tony, and there is a lot of detail in it and it was very interesting. And I think the main thing is, and you pointed out early on, is we've got a plan, we have got a plan. And it's a pretty good plan. As William said, it's a bit of a but it's definitely, I'd recommend everybody read it through because it's very comprehensive. And I've just got one question, actually. I think I've already touched on other things. Can I? I've just got one question, which is, when would that be approved? And what would be the timetable for that to all start? Or I guess we're completely dependent on government.
Okay. First of all, really big thank you for that, members who've taken the time to though everybody hasn't had the opportunity to, but or hasn't been able to, but to read the plan. Because I think it enables that sort of confidence that this is comprehensive and there's a lot of thought and analysis behind this. The issue of the relationship between the city and the city region is really, really important. And there's two bits to this. When it comes to things like employment and skills, the funding will flow through the combined authority of the city region. And in terms of the employment market, it isn't just within the city. Those supply chains and the labour market, the city is a magnet for lots and lots of people to come into. So it's absolutely appropriate that we look at that at a city region level. As I said in the introduction, we've set this in the context of the wider city region plan. It was submitted jointly, this plan was submitted jointly by both mayors and we've worked really closely with our partners there. And I think it is very important that we do that. Secondly, whether we like it or not, governments see, because we are, I think, we're one of the only cities with a only a handful of cities with a directly elected mayor. And governments see the construct of the combined authorities and the metro mayors as a building block they want to work with. And in all of the discussions that we've had with departments, we've included combined authority colleagues in those discussions. And I think it is really, really important that we work together. And what matters is the impact on the ground for people in Liverpool and the difference that we make. And I know the spirit in which it was offered, but I think that that partnership working is really important. And the fact that the city council and the combined authority are shoulder to shoulder on this is resonating really positively with government. That absolutely is not the norm across the country. And it is to our strength that that is the case. And certainly from my point of view, we need to continue to do that. In terms of the ongoing scrutiny, and councillor Kemp picked this up when he came back in, I'm very, very happy, and I know my colleagues will be as well, to provide regular updates to this, to the regeneration scrutiny committee, we'll be doing the same for cabinet in terms of the implementation of this. I'm really happy to do that and welcome the scrutiny that we've had tonight and I'm sure we will get in the future as well. And councillor Toulon's point about when will this be approved? We've already secured some funding from government. We're already working on the implementation. We're having weekly meetings with offices and partners doing this. Elaine talked earlier on about the ongoing work with DWP that we're doing as a result of this plan that we did jointly with the city region. And they're not involved in those sort of workshops sessions in every part of the country, but they are doing in Liverpool because we've been proactive and they recognise that we're up for doing things differently and working in partnership with them. So we're already implementing. This isn't, we were never going to get government to say, oh, here's several hundred million pounds off you go. The next key milestone is going to be the comprehensive spending review. And the submission that we make with our city region partners into that is going to be really, really important to get more money for the priority projects to take these forward. There's no doubt the combined authority and the metro mayor are prioritising some of the key Liverpool projects because they're bought into the work that we've done and they can see the economic potential for the whole city region in getting the city firing on all cylinders again as quickly as possible. And things like the retrofit housing programme in there, and government have announced a programme. We think it can be improved because we want to build local supply chains and maximise the employment opportunities as well as the environmental benefits that come from that. And the anti deprivation measures by creating affordable warmth and reducing fuel bills in low income households, et cetera. So there's a lot of work already going on in terms of implementation. There'll be a lot more. And perhaps what I would say, councillor Toulon, is we were really clear with government. We're not asking for government's permission to act. We're offering the government to invest in the accelerated delivery of this plan. And they can clearly influence the quantum of that delivery, particularly around employment and skills. But for the majority of the projects in there, notwithstanding reviews of the market around cruise liner, et cetera, as I've already addressed in response to councillor Kemp's point, we have the ambition to deliver this plan. It might take a bit longer and we might have to find some more circuitous routes to do that. But these are key projects to get the, I almost got that word right, to get the to get the city moving in the direction we want it to. But we are building on our core strengths. And it isn't, you know, these are the great jobs in health and life sciences, in digital, in data analytics, in material science and other sectors where Liverpool is increasing its strength and in some cases developing world leading strengths. And so really, really credible jobs that we can create. And of course, those knowledge intensive jobs create significant numbers of supply chain jobs. And we want good jobs at all levels in the economy to make sure that we get that inclusion and deliver the impact and aspiration that we have in the city plan. I think I've covered everything. If I've missed something.
I'm sure that's more than sufficient. It's a very thorough and comprehensive response there. So thank you very much, Tony. Can I move that we endorsed the decision of the cabinet? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Ordinarily, at this point in the meeting, Ordinarily, at this point in the meeting, I'd say you can all go home. Most of you are home. So what I'd like to say instead is a big thank you to our committee services officers for putting this whole hybrid meeting thing together for us. And I'd like that minuted committee services to thank yourself for the work that you're doing on this. And also minuted to thank our town hall staff as well for getting the cameras and all of the equipment and the technical stuff that they've done. And it's spot on. And I'd like to have that on record. So councillor Murray, I'll bring you in.
Just to echo that as well, but I really would like, if we could have it minuted, our thanks to councillor Miller, who should have stood down in May, for the work he's done around businesses. It's actually unbelievable. We've discussed it, you know. And I just would like for that to be minuted and to share with him that when we discussed it, we would like to focus on some of the work you've done, Gary, right through your time as cabinet member as well in the November meeting. It was just the agenda was too full tonight to do that. But for now, just to say a huge thank you. I think we all know small businesses who were desperate and yet you worked around the clock 24/7 and you got them all home and dry. So thank you very much.
Agreed. Big round of applause there for councillor Miller from across Liverpool. Thumbs up from us all.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, and with that, I'm declaring the meeting closed. Thank you all very much for your attendance tonight.